And then Marie.
Okay.
All right. Hi Ellen, Lorraine and Bonnie.
Hi.
Hello.
Emery, do we have folks out there participating?
We do. We always do.
Yeah. Usually I could see how many were there, but I don't see anything on here now. Hi Ted.
Hello.
We've got six people out there.
Hope everybody had a good weekend, good holiday.
We did, thank you. And you?
Whether man cooperate gave what he want.
Ted, I don't know why, but your volume breaks up when you speak every once in a while.
Yeah, yours does for me as well.
You're the only one that I have that issue with. Just, just to let you know.
I appreciate it. Thank you. There's a new version of Zoom out, I gather. Emery, have you seen that yet?
I haven't seen it. I knew that my computer didn't update. So I don't know if it's the same thing.
Josh just said. Josh just sent something from the BPW. It was a Zoom 5.0.
Okay, I. Yeah, I don't know what version I'm using. It's 1 o'clock. If you want to get started, I'm gonna, hold on, I'm gonna.
All right.
I just moved the police chief over.
Let us there for a minute. Okay. Good afternoon. It is 1 o'clock on Tuesday, May the 26th, and we're here for a special meeting of the City Council to discuss some business relating to the election that we had, that the Board of Elections met last week, and they had some recommendations as to how to move forward with the elections. So we can start with that discussion, and then I think we're all interested in getting to the second point regarding reopening starting the economy. So Glenn had, first of all, the Board of Elections met last week and came up with a proposal that recommends that we move forward with the election on July the 18th, and which is 45 days after Phase 1, and meets all the other criteria that were established in the original board's recommendation. And there are some other guidelines, and then Glenn has prepared a resolution recognizing this, what was said and what was adopted or recommended by the Board of Elections. And hopefully, all of you have had a chance to review that. And I think that does a good job of outlining what was, and capturing what was recommended by the Board of Elections. Glenn or Emery, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
Only that I did receive some proposed edits from Councilperson Morgan that, I don't know if everybody got them or not, but we can talk through them quickly.
I did not, so.
Let me bring them up on my screen. I'm sorry if I'm looking down. They're on a screen that's below the screen that's got my key on it.
So if I might interrupt just for a moment, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Let it, Councilperson Bouffet, can I mention our discussion we had earlier?
Pardon?
Do you mind if I mention this, the discussion that we had earlier?
Please stay off free.
So earlier, Councilperson Bouffet called me because wanted to know, you know, basically, how, how should this discussion go? And could he participate? So like Councilperson Reardon, I think his intention is to recuse. However, he raised an interesting point that I hadn't considered before. He said, but I would like to address the council on one or both of these issues as a candidate. So I think that to the extent the council, the members who have not recused feels it's appropriate, you can hear from Councilperson Bouffet as a candidate, so long as you take comments from other candidates may also be on, on the line. Does anybody take issue with that?
No, I think that's a good idea.
I think it's fine.
It seems to be consistent with the participation at the Board of Elections of all candidates.
Right, right. Good. Thanks for that. So Emery, so at this point, Councilperson Reardon, Councilperson Bouffet, you're, you're both recused, correct?
Correct.
I won't be voting, but I would like to make some comments when appropriate.
Thank you.
As a candidate.
Okay, I, I think Fred, you could probably go ahead and make your comments, and then I think we may have other candidates who are in the background that Anne Marie, if they want to comment, Emery can upload them so they can speak as well.
Well, I, I wanted to raise the question as to why we have to send out applications for absentee ballot. Just, our citizens have the opportunity for an absentee ballot now. They can do that by simply calling in to the city and saying, I'd like an absentee ballot, please send me one. And I'd like for them to take some initiative. It, but it wouldn't bother me if we sent out a postcard simply saying, if you need an application, you'll need to call the city and ask for one. But I just, it just seems to me that our residents should also now be taking some responsibility. And so I raised the question, and as part of that question to suggest maybe just a postcard reminding people they have that right. So that was the first thing that I wanted to put on the table.
Remember, for members of the public who are listening, let me just remind everybody that part of the Board of Elections recommendation is that absentee ballot applications be sent to all the registered voters in the city. So that's, that's the reason Councilperson Bouffet is raising this issue as part of the, as part of the recommendation before City Council today.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah.
It's not the decision.
Right. And Fred, I think that that was part of the governor's recommendation that came out from the governor's office that, in terms of holding elections during this.
But that's a recommendation, not the decision.
Okay. Okay. All right. Emery, do we have any candidates on the line that might want to comment further on other things? Or Fred, are you finished first?
With that one, yes. When we get into the ordinance, I have two suggestions, I think are kind of minor.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So is, Emery, is there, is anyone on the line that might want to speak?
So Kay is on the line. She is not asked to speak, but I'm going to unmute her.
Okay.
In case she has comments.
Okay. Looks like she's got something in the chat room.
Oh, okay. So I didn't see that.
Yeah. So she's got a comment that says, good afternoon, all. I believe the city should mail the application as stated. I trust the Board of Election would monitor the situation. Okay. All right. Are there any other candidates online that would like to speak?
I don't, I don't see any others.
Okay.
So what I have on the screen is the correction, or I guess change recommended by Rob, noting that where there's a 202, July 3rd, 202 should be 2020. So, but we would obviously fix that, but.
Okay.
Right. So, so the first modification that Councilperson Morgan suggested is in Letter A. So that, that whole paragraph would read, the 2020 City of Lewis Annual Municipal Election is rescheduled to occur on July 18, 2020. And his proposed edit is, in accordance with the city, with the city charter, in-person voting will be held at City Hall from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I don't have any problem with that edit. It's, it's just restating what's already in the charter.
And it's also clarifying that the time, the time for anybody making a transfer. Okay.
Section B says the deadline, this is, this is an addition, or proposed modification, the deadline to register for voting is accordingly, accordingly rescheduled to 4:00 PM on July 3rd, 20, we'll make that 2020. So that first sentence I'm fine with because in the charter, the deadline is 15 days prior to the date of the election. So July 3rd, 2020 would be 15 days prior. 4:00 PM is, is that, Emery, is that time appropriate, given when City Hall will be closing and?
So that, I believe 4:00 PM is in the charter.
It's not.
Oh, it's not? Okay, sorry.
But it's just whenever it's convenient for city, city staff. I think it's usual, usually their closing hour. Is that the time when the offices?
The offices close, when, when offices are open, offices close at 4:00.
Okay. Then.
Seems appropriate.
Good.
Yeah.
There's a typo in, maybe submitted by mail to the City of Lewis, those I in the city.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So I have a, I have a question about this. In terms of sequencing, are we, are we waiting until after the registration deadline to mail out a ballot, absentee ballot applications? Because that's going to make it mighty tight.
No, we would, we would, based on what we discussed with the Board of Elections last week, we would get that mailing ready this week to go out early next week.
The change that Rob has put in, what I guess would now be subsection C instead of B.
Right.
That absentee ballot applications will bound to all registered voters. And if their registration is open until July 3rd, then the applications couldn't even be sent out until after the July 4th holiday. I think that's, that's way, way, way too tight.
Well, the way we would do it is we would go ahead and mail out what we have, and then as new registrations come in, we would mail them.
Okay, then I think we can, we have to, we're going to have to change the language, but it can't go the way it's written now, the way Rob has suggested it be written.
Well, the, the language there tracks, well, the word eligible was what was in the governor's order, and that's why I use that sometimes and register and still not be eligible because you haven't lived in the jurisdiction long enough, so you wouldn't be eligible until the next election. So I, I kind of like the word eligible better than registered. But I think, I, I'm not sure the language needs to be changed. I mean, what Emery is saying is that those who are currently on the book of registered voters will get an absentee ballot application mailed to them as soon as we have the, the applications ready. So that would be one big chunk of mailings that'll go. But then people will trickle in, new registrants will trickle in and say, I'd like to register. I would expect at that time, if they're stopping in at City Hall, I would expect at that time, the ballot application would even be given to them then there.
Okay. I, I had one other question, which is how, if I recall the charter, which I, sorry, I haven't reread recently, but there is a requirement to send out by, I think it's certified mail to all individuals who've not voted in the last two elections. How does the timing of that work in all of this? And maybe it's dictated by the charter, charter, and I apologize, I didn't look at it.
That's already been done.
Okay.
So that scrubbing is done.
Terrific.
Glenn, can you, can you run by us again, your preference for the word eligible? Because my concern with eligible is that the, we don't know who's eligible, the registered in the city.
Well, I, I guess it's the reverse for me. We know who are, who's on the books of registered voters.
Right.
But there is a subset of them.
Hey, Don.
That may not be eligible.
In a meeting, City Council, can I call you back?
Dennis, can you mute yourself?
Dennis, yeah.
So I think it'd be a very small subset of people, and I guess I don't take big issue with registered versus eligible because I, I use eligible because that's what was used in the governor's order, and I can see a small portion of people. There may be one or two who have actually registered, but they won't be eligible until the next election if they haven't. You know, so if I, so if I move into Louis in the next few weeks, I could register, you know, a week or, I, I could register, you know, to vote in the next election, but I will not have lived in the jurisdiction long enough to actually be eligible to vote.
How about eligible and registered, or registered and eligible? I think.
Yes, yes.
That would be, okay.
I would like to suggest that we put the date June, June 1 on that Item B, so that we say that we're going to send this out first, June 1.
Item B?
On, on the, the City of Lewis shall mail absentee ballot applications to eligible registered voters in the city on June 1.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think that, that works.
I don't think so either.
Why not? That's what we've got to do.
Yes, but that doesn't catch all the people who may register after that and are also eligible.
Right.
Well, then we could say, and we would provide applications for those registering up till July 3rd. But we want to start, we're going to mail them out June 1, so why not say so?
I don't understand your point, Fred. But, but just to step back for a second, I mean, have you changed your view that you're okay with sending out the applications? Or is that still your position? Because I thought that's what you said your position is.
I, I raised my other question, and that, it was answered, and I'm, and that's okay. I'll go along with what we do. But I'm simply suggesting that if we're going to mail them out the 1st of June to everybody, then it should say so.
Well, it wa, well, I guess the question is to Anne Marie, is June 1 when you intend to put the applications in the mail?
Yes, that, that is, that is when we intend. Now, as you know, it could take longer than.
Well, this is a busy week.
It, it'll be that week.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't really care. You can put that on there as long as it's clear that people who register after that date will also receive an application.
That's correct.
There's no point in having a cutoff date. I mean, this is about, this is about helping people to vote, and that's what we want. We want more people to vote.
Right.
Point A says that they can register up till the 3rd of July. Okay. Point B says that we're going to start sending out the applications, if that's what we're going to do, on the week of July 1, of June 1. Why not say it?
Well, if we want to say we're going to be, send it out the week of June 1 for everybody who we've got who's registered and eligible, and also for anyone who registers thereafter up until the deadline of July 3rd, 2020, okay.
That's fine.
But otherwise, you're, the implication is that it's, we're sending them out on June 1st, and that's that.
No, I'm, I'm good with what you're suggesting.
One question, and this is for Glenn. The 15 days before the election is July 3rd, which is the holiday this year. So does that, does that matter since you don't have to register in person?
First of all, there won't be any mail delivery that day, so you probably need to back it out to the 2nd.
We, if we move it, we, we, we can't move it back.
Right.
Because it's, by the charter, people have to be able to register up to 15 days. We could make it up to 13 or 12 days, I guess.
Could you?
I don't think so. I think we can make it longer. I don't think we can make it shorter. But is, is July 3rd, is that the day that City Hall will be closed, or is it going to be July 6th?
I think it's.
When the holidays on a Saturday.
Observed on Friday.
I'm sorry, I missed the very end of that. If it falls on a Saturday, what?
It's observed on the Friday.
Okay. So we can't, so we can't have people registering on July 3rd because City Hall will be closed.
Right. You got to do it on the 2nd.
No, I tend to agree with Councilperson Morgan that you should give a day closer to the election day. The, the law says that you cannot set a deadline for registration more than 30 days before the election. So the, the law implies that, you know, you can, you can go closer to the date of election, but you can't go further out from the date of election.
Okay, then go to the 6th.
That would be my preference.
Right, right.
This is the alternative that in the past, we have set aside one Saturday for people to register in person who might have difficulty registering in person because they work. We could ask that city staff be open on July 3rd and make that the Saturday on which we have, on which we open the City Hall for registration. It is different this year because people can register.
Online.
Well, they can't register online.
No, but they can request a ballot.
Yeah. I think the problem with July 3rd is, since it looks like just about everything is going to be open, July 3rd is a, a, almost impossible day to get around in Louis. So I, I think they'd be, I'd suggest we choose a different Saturday if we're going to do this. The fact that, you know, city staff, you know, they're looking at a three-day weekend. I have, I hate to drag them in on a.
I agree with you, Bonnie, and it was just a, a way of working around the problem that 15 days before the election is, is a holiday. But on time with July 6th, if, if you are.
Want to do a registration on a Saturday, you could do it on June the 27th.
And I don't think we need that since we've made it so easy to register by getting an application in the mail.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that.
I am.
Okay.
Bonnie?
Um. I, I am just because, I mean, I think the, the less congregating we sponsor, the better.
I agree that too.
Okay. So there was a comment that came in from Trina Hicks regarding, she had concurred with Kay's comment, and that's, that's in the chat room. You can see that while we were talking.
Yeah, we're going to change the deadline to register to July 6th.
Yes, at 4:00.
At 4:00.
At 4:00.
That means that the mail-in, if they mail in, they. Get, get, get excited. That, that's just for registration, right? July 6th?
Yes.
Okay.
So just, Tom Panetta asked in the chat, does the charter require that registration be available on Saturday? How can it be waived? It's not a requirement. The charter states that the, the mayor and city council may set a date. So. Glenn, do you want to confirm that language? Do you want me to pull up the charter?
I said it earlier, and I believe that, that's correct. I'm looking, I'm going to look at the charter now.
And the charter is silent, I assume, on registration online?
That's correct.
Yeah, there's never been registration online before.
Right. But I just wanted to clarify, just make it clear that it's, it's silent on that issue. So we're free to, to do what we can to increase the franchise.
Right. And I, and I did consult with the Department of Elections for putting that out there too.
And so I think you've, since we last dealt with this, Anne Marie, you've, you added email as a way of returning an, a registration application.
Yes, yes.
I think that, that is really facilitating participation.
And just, just FYI, the charter does use the word may. The City Council may provide by resolution for the office of the city manager to be open on one Saturday. So it's an optional consideration.
I think the fact that, as Rob just pointed out, that we're doing an email sort of negates the necessity of having a Saturday registration.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So what is your, with these modifications to this resolution?
I'd like to offer one more suggestion.
Okay.
That we put an Item C in that would say that the city will begin mailing ballots on June 18th. That, I think satisfies the requirement of I think Anne Marie had indicated that was about the time that they would start responding to the applications and providing ballots.
Good.
Well, why wouldn't we just start writing, sending out ballots as soon as we get a request for one?
I, I just believe that, it's my personal opinion, but I, I believe that we need to make sure that there is a good campaign period. And I, I personally would like to see the ballots going out at about the same time that the forum is going to be held, and people will have had a chance to hear from all of the candidates. And I think it would just be wise to not rush this, but to provide some, some spacing. And that we could provide the ballots some near 30 days in advance of the election. But the process would be a little bit cleaner. That's, in my opinion, as, as one of five candidates.
So I think the state code addresses this issue in Section 7573 of Title 15. Subsection B says not more than 16 or less than four days prior to an election, and with, this is the, or, and within three days after the absentee ballots, envelopes, and instructions therefore become available. The municipality shall mail to each elector who requests and qualifies for an absentee ballot pursuant to this section, the following, it's the ballot and other things. So I think that if the materials are prepared and ready, and you receive a request for a ballot, the municipality is obligated to try to send it within three days of receiving the request, the application.
I do expect it's going to take us a little bit of time to get the ballots ready because we still, given the number we're expecting, we need to get the envelopes.
We may be close to that date that Councilperson Bouffet suggests.
Okay.
So where, where are we?
So if we're interested, so if we introduce the, if we accept Section B as modified and suggested, then what was currently, what was in the original document as B would become C. And then if we want to do the mail ballots, it would be mailing the ballots, it would be Item D. Correct, Glenn?
Right. If you wanted to add something consistent with what Councilperson Bouffet is suggesting, I'm just not, I'm just concerned that we might get sideways with the state law if we put a date in here and Emery's timing works out a little bit differently.
Right.
I agree.
Right. All right. I think that might be one of the things we need to set aside then. So we'll have, then we would have A, A, B, and C in this section. All right. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I thought that, just shout out to the Board of Elections. I thought they handled this carefully and professionally. And we will have a, 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 a good and hopefully issue-free election.
We're here, here on the shout out.
That's true.
So then the.
They worked, they, they deliberated. Go ahead, Glenn.
Then the resolution would be as proposed by Councilperson Morgan with the following changes. The new subsection B will correct the 202 to a, to a 2020 date. It'll be, the day will be July 3rd, or July 6th instead of July 3rd for the deadline to register to vote. It will be at 4:00 PM. Then subsection, old subsection B becomes new subsection C, and instead of striking eligible. And instead of striking eligible and inserting registered, we will provide eligible and registered voters. Those are the changes, and if everybody's okay with that, I would take a motion to approve the resolution.
You need, also, you need to fix the typo in mail.
Yes.
Subsection.
Yes.
City added two thousand.
Hey, Anne Marie, do we?
Is there a motion to?
I just have one more question. Do we, that election mailbox that we've got set up there, election@ci.louis, et cetera, that's, that's up and running, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's how we've been taking the registrations.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that that was available and functional.
Yep.
Okay, good.
I'll move, we adopt the resolution as, as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second, and I assuming that Dennis has already recused and Fred is, is refusing himself. Is that correct?
I recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So, a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thanks for all the discussion. I think we've done everything we can to ensure that the public is, has every opportunity to vote and participate in this election. So, thank you all for your comments. So, I think we can move on to item C two and talk about the possible action reopening and restarting the economy.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure, go ahead.
I believe it is traditional and may be required by the charter, again, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, to put some materials in the Cape Gazette about the election. That's all gonna happen, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank, and I sorry, I'm sorry, Ted, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure that was all in play. Thank you.
I want it, I want it to wait until today.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, we need to, the path forward now has been defined, so I think we've got a plan. Okay, so I think we can move forward then about reopening and restarting the economy. I think all of you have received the latest press release from the, from the governor regarding his reopening of suspending the short-term rental ban and, and the quarantine, quarantine effective June 1st. Obviously, that makes several changes in the way we had been planning. Anne Marie had developed a phase one, two, three plan, and the, his order today will, will may require us to modify that considerably. I first of all, would like to compliment the way things went this, yeah, again. I would first like to compliment on the way things went this weekend. It was a very successful weekend. The weatherman cooperated, but our respective staffs and the contracted cleaning crew that we had did an outstanding job of controlling the situation, and I think everyone was safe. We did have some minor issues with people not wearing face masks, but by and large, everyone was wearing a face mask as appropriate and as required. So, I thank the city staff, the streets department, the lifeguards, and our meter patrol for all their efforts to have this weekend go as smoothly as it did. And of course, we did have some people who came and from out of state, and that was again to be expected. But again, I don't think it was nearly the number of people that we would have had had we'd not had the travel ban in effect. So, I thank the public and our staff for all their efforts, and of course, the administrative staff who worked hard to get all the things in place. So, we did find a new cleaning company to help us maintain the bathrooms. And by all, all indications, they did an outstanding job of stepping up to the plate. So, that was good. So, we can talk about the phases, but one of the items that came out of, that's coming out of the chamber, the Chamber had organized a group to talk about, how do we restart the economy? And one of the things that is coming out of the, that sector is a recommendation that we, and Amber, three and I spent some time with Betsy and Mert Foods. I know that we did not adopt the ambassador program for the beaches. What we have here is the fact that many of the businesses have come together and feel that we could help people of not only the shoppers, potential shoppers and customers of our businesses, but also our, our shop owners and our restaurant owners feel better about people being informed and knowing what was going on and what requirements we had in place if we had this ambassador program. So, there was some discussion about how we might do that, and I want to thank Mert Foods and the American Legion. As you know, they had done the program last year in reference to the, the wall, the portable wall that was here for Memorial Day last year. And they have a great system of, of registering people who would be, who helped with that particular event last year, a very successful event. And Mert and the other members of the, of the American Legion have stepped up and said they would help us with this program and would handle the registration for those who would volunteer to be an ambassador in the downtown area. And I think it's an interesting program. I think there is, there are people who would like to see this happen. One of the things that the Chamber's program is focusing on is getting our locals to support our downtown business. And there's going to be confusion. Each of the communities along the beach are handling reopening somewhat differently. And I think this is a possibility that could help reduce some of that confusion and point people in the right direction and help people ferret their way through the new, the new normal that we're going to be living with. I, again, the American Legion, long a friend of this community and the American Legion Auxiliary, these men and women have really stepped up to the plate to volunteer their time. And I think it's something we should talk about and consider. Betsy is on the line if she wants to make any comments, as is Mert. You may be aware, I think all of you are aware, that Mert not only is willing to help with this going forward, but she also did a, an excellent presentation for our meter patrol, our lifeguards, and our streets people regarding on hand sanitation and disinfecting on Thursday. That will be a video that should be available hopefully by tomorrow, and we'll post it on YouTube so that not only can our citizens, all of us, but also other communities can take advantage of seeing Mert's presentation. It was very well done, and I thank her for that. But I'd like to open it up for discussion unless Betsy wants or Mert want to make some comments before we go further.
I've unmuted both of them, so they should be able to talk.
Okay, great.
I'm here. This is Mert here.
Thank you, Mert.
I'm here as well and here to answer any questions that council may have about this program.
Okay, council, would you like to ask any questions about the way it's laid out? I know Anne Marie sent the, the program, the layout of it out earlier this, this morning, so hopefully you've got a chance to read it.
I, I'll weigh in if you want. I, I commend both the American Legion and Betsy's gang at the Chamber and all the participants. The shop owners and restaurant owners in Lewis were coming together with this project. And from everything I've seen on here, I could easily support this, and I hope it works. And I'm happy to see our guys with this opportunity.
Thank you, Dennis.
Go ahead, Rob. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I thought Dennis said it nicely, and I agree with everything he said.
Great.
I agree with what Dennis said, but I had two questions. The first was, how, is this, is this a program that you anticipate, or the, the Chamber anticipates going on all summer? Or what's the duration, do you think? I'm just curious.
I actually talked about that this morning, and we both agreed that you, we'll institute it now when it's very much needed. But if during the course of the summer, we realize that it's not needed anymore, that it's, it's a program that could, you know, disband and just use as an ad-needed basis.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. I guess my second question is to council. I'm not sure, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all for this, but I, I don't know that it requires council action. I mean, this isn't a city program. They're not asking for any city facilities or other support. So, I, I guess I thought the agenda item about taking action was on the reopening, but not on this. I'm just asking.
I think what they're, I think what.
To do here, or?
It's a more, it's an informational role, Bonnie, that they want to bring this forward and obviously would like our support and that, that we would support the program. And from the sounds of everybody, most, all, all of you are supportive of the idea. I again, thank you, I thank the Chamber and, and the American Legion Auxiliary for all their willingness to step up the plate. You know, American Legion lives, lives very quietly over at, at the end of American Legion Drive, and we really don't see a lot of interaction with them, but they're always, they've always been great parts of the city. And I, I thank them very much for their willing to seeing this possible need and their willingness to step up and offer this service. I think it's, will help people feel more secure about coming downtown.
I, I would just like to, to raise sort of a question. Now that we're opening up short-term rentals and gonna have this ambassador program, those are all great steps. But if we have visitors coming into the city, how are we gonna feed them? Because the restaurants haven't been able to open yet. And having just takeouts for the visitors, I just, it's a question. It seems to me that we've still got a gap in what we're doing. And I don't know the answer to it, but I think I put the question on the table.
Well, June 1, the restaurants will be open at least at thirty percent, but given the, the governor's comments this morning, I suspect he may be revising that now that he's made the other comments about people being able to gather in, in groups up to two hundred and fifty people. I suspect that he may revise his restaurant guidance of thirty percent. I don't know that. And they did say on the conference call, you may recall, that they would be providing further guidance later today. So, I, I don't know.
But doesn't that, doesn't that still require social distancing, even those large gatherings?
Right, the two fifty still require social distancing, and that's only outdoor gatherings. It's not.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, Ted, but I, it, I, I haven't seen anything so far in the governor's stuff about relaxing social distancing, which is gonna obviously present some practical difficulties to having, to having, you know, fully open your restaurants.
I, I don't know. At the same time that the, the governor was having the call with us this morning, he was also have, Damian Distalino was having a conversation with the hospitality group. So, there may be other guidance coming later this, today or tomorrow about restaurants. I don't know. But the social distancing thing is going to be an issue. I agree.
Ted, I was on that call with Damian this morning, and the subject about the restaurants did not come up.
Okay, thank you.
So, to Fred's point, if, you know, if you live here, you go this week and buy your staples because a lot of people are gonna be eating in.
Yeah, yeah, I think, well, there'll be a lot of, there's also gonna be a lot of carryout, so.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope so for the restaurant's sake.
Yeah, those restaurants who choose to participate in the, in the takeaway service will obviously be busy. And so, but that, that has, that doesn't relate directly to the ambassador program. I assume that based on the way we've been talking here, that all of you are supportive of the idea of this going forward. And if that's the case, then I, I again thank Bert and the Chamber and the group that have been working on marketing for the downtown businesses for all their efforts to come together with a program that I think will help our people feel more secure.
I, I agree, just, but just to be, just to avoid any confusion out there, it's not as, it's a chamber pro, program, not a council.
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then in terms of events, and, and thank you very much, and again, Mert and Betsy, thank you. In terms of actual events and things like that, this whole phase one, two, three will need to be revised. Actually, the tennis courts were open this weekend.
The tennis courts were not open by the city.
I think they scaled the fence.
Right, they, they cut the, the wires that had it closed and tried it. It's so actually, that is one of the things I want to talk about. You know, I think based on the guidance of the gatherings of up to two hundred and fifty, you know, we had outdoor classes that aren't stationary, limited to ten. I think we can just say out, outdoor fitness classes in it would start June 1st in accordance with social distancing guidelines. But tennis courts are, are the, the other big thing. Two people on there playing tennis or two or three, four on there playing pickleball, I don't think is a problem. Our, our concern about opening the courts relates more to the, the gatherings that you have when people are playing pickleball, that there's no social distancing and people are congregated on the courts waiting their turn. People have been asking us both tennis and pickleball when we're gonna open the, the courts. You know, we did have that as a, a phase one, so ideally, we would open the courts on, on June 1st. But if, if we can't achieve the social distancing, and if we have people congregating, we may have to walk that one back.
I think we need some signage down there about social distancing, you know, not that they're signed, I mean, we've had a plethora of signs, thanks to both what the city has done and what the state has done. But I think some signs posted on the, on the fencing around the tennis courts would be appropriate.
But I think Anne Marie raises a, a larger question. I mean, I agree with you, Ted, but I think Anne Marie raises a large question, which is, you know, that while the, the restrictions are being relaxed, there's, there's still a lot of restrictions in place.
Absolutely.
How the city, if it falls to the city to enforce them, how to enforce them is going to be a major challenge. And I, I, you know, I, I think Tom Spell is on the call. I don't know if we want to hear from him at some point, but I think it's gonna be a big challenge for, for our police and, you know, to, to make sure that we are friendly about it, but nonetheless, that we ensure that the restrictions are, are abided by.
Good. Tom, do you want to comment? You're on the call, obviously.
Well, yeah, I would agree with Bonnie. Obviously, it presents lots of challenges for us, but, you know, we've been committed to doing our part and doing it appropriately, and I think we've accomplished both. And, you know, as things evolve, we'll, we'll adapt and continue to do it and do it appropriately. So, despite the challenges, you know, we'll still do what we can.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, so the other, there are other topics in terms of opening the restrooms. I think we were able to open Mary Vessel's Park restroom this weekend, and that went without flaw. And it was successful and obviously.
And the trailhead.
And the trailhead, exactly. We do have the Canalfront Park restrooms. We are renting slips at City Dock and also at Canalfront Park. And I think that the expectation is that those people have access to bathrooms and showers. And so, I think we need to think about getting those online and reopen. I know Ellen Lorraine was part of a conversation earlier today. Were you able to reach Chippy, and is she interested, or do you know?
I have not been able to speak with her yet, but I will let you know as soon as I am able to.
Okay, but I do think we need to be able to open those restrooms as, as soon as possible. I think we're still planning on holding, Anne Marie, correct me if I'm wrong. They're still planning on holding the Swannendale Park restroom closed at this point.
And Ted, I'm not quite so sure I'm, I'm with you on this. Anne Marie, what is the staffing, the increased staffing requirement for the much more frequent cleaning required as we reopen the restroom?
It's, it's not as much of a staffing issue. Our, our staff goes in and does spot cleaning and, and sprays surfaces with disinfectant, I think, two, two times a day is what we ended up with.
Yeah.
Late, late morning and then early afternoon. And then the, the big difference is that we are now having a contractor come in to do all of those cleanings. So, there's an additional cost to that in order to make sure that our, our restaurants are, are properly maintained.
And we, we, the, the contractor has the bandwidth to increase the number of bathrooms.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, and the, the contractor also, we think that this is a reimbursable cost, right?
Yeah.
Well, i- if there's money, um, so, um, you know, th- there are several pots of money. The CARES Act, I think the state's going to be stretched on that with unemployment and the testing. So there will be some of that that's available to reimburse local governments, but I, I'm not sure how much. There's other funding that we can get through DMA that comes through FEMA. But for those, those reimbursements, it's only seventy-five percent. So reimbursable to a point, we're not sure to what point at this time.
Are those, are those cumulative? In other words, if we could, let's say we can get seventy-five percent from DMA, could we? Could we add the twenty-five percent from the CARES Act to that?
No, because DMA can only cover expenses that aren't eligible through other, that can't be recovered through other sources. So they're kind of the, the last resort.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll, we'll do our best, you know, we are tracking every penny. That is being spent in relation to this from, you know, signs to hand sanitizer to restroom cleaning to technology.
So, I mean, I will say with, with the short-term rentals opening and the meter season picking up. Hopefully the, the city's financial, the, the, the concerns that we had earlier are, are easing a bit. I mean, it's still going to be a hit, but I don't think it's going to be a catastrophe.
It, it won't be, you know, when, when, early on, when we didn't know if we'd have much of a summer at all.
Yep.
Um, you know, that, that fear is no longer with us.
Well, unless there's a spike.
Unless there's a spike, but it, the other thing is, a- again, I think demand will be down. So those, those revenue sources will not be what they were projected, but they won't be. You know, the worst-case scenario we had looked at was zero and what do we do with that?
Right.
Fortunately, we'll be better than that.
Yep.
Uh, so we also have the idea of what are we going to do? We talked about Zumba and exercise classes. We also have things that are going on in our parks, like our concerts in parks at Stango Park. And we have the movies that the Friends of the Canalfront Park were, have planned for the summer. I think that we should consider whether we want to go ahead with those, also encouraging masks and social distancing. As, as we have been discussing about every other activity that is possible that could happen. I think that there, obviously these events are very popular. And we're in good, open space. And we, I think Allison has got the, the performers all scheduled for the summer concert series. We already did hold them off until the ninth, uh, I believe, uh, the tenth. And then, but you know.
That one we canceled.
Yes.
One on the ninth we canceled.
So I think, uh, what are we going to do going forward? Given the situation that the governor has come up with this morning, it sounds as though we could proceed with these events in the parks. What are, what are your thoughts about that? Again, with respect to social distancing and other measures that are all still in place?
Well, no one has mentioned it yet, but I think we ought to have to factor in the fact that some of the people that live in Lewis. As much as they might like to go to these concerts, they may not want to risk exposure.
That's right.
We have to think about the numbers as well, because I, I feel pretty confident a lot of people will not be going because of the risk.
Well, for example, the nursing homes that have brought people before to come and enjoy the concerts, I, that's, that's not going to happen.
I don't think so. So.
I mean, again, I think it's, I think it's an issue of signage, um, if we are going to go forward with this, reminding people what's required. I mean, I have to say, one thing that I thought was kind of a simple and it looked quite effective was in the, um. I guess it was in the New York parks, they took lime and they did circles. In order to visually let people know what social distancing looks like.
Right.
I don't know how hard that would be, but it might be something we want to try.
Yep. Yep.
Marie, what are the, the financial implications of not canceling now? I mean, if we hold off and find out that, uh, as Dennis predicts, people aren't going to come. Then it's not much point in holding a concert, but we might be financially stuck.
Well, this, this doesn't cost us, this is not part of our.
All three, is, is the W. Get it funded, the bank provides a nice.
Right, that, and then the Division of the Arts.
Right, so this, it's not, not part of the city budget.
That's, that's very nice.
So. Yeah, what we can do is we can, and first of all, all of these events have a, have an opening, uh, welcome kind of comment. And Allison has done a lot. I think each of you have been greeters at the concert at one point or another. Certainly, uh, as you're welcoming people or as Allison's welcoming people, we can certainly remind people again about social distancing. And we can, uh, do all of that on a go-forward basis. If we find that it's unmanageable or untenable, we could, we can certainly cancel it. But I, I, I think in order for people to be able to get out and enjoy the open air as much as possible. These are events we should consider giving a try. I, I ask what your thoughts are on that.
I think we ought to give it a go and see how it goes. And like anything else, if the behavior isn't appropriate, we may have to consider canceling them.
Right, we'll have to monitor everything pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, that, how do I put this kindly? The age cohort, uh, who tend to come to those concerts are, are kind of my age cohort. So they're not usually a particularly rowdy group. So I think we can try it, uh, that's, I'm talking about the concerts, Zumba and all that. Um, I have no idea how, what the logistics of social distancing for a large group of Zumba folks would be. I, I just don't know how that works. I, I, I've never attended, so I, I can't speak to it.
Well, the Zumba is normally done up on the deck of the Canalfront Park. And I think that's going to have to move someplace else because it's just too tight. But they can certainly move it down onto the lawn or, or into the gravel areas of the park if they need to.
I mean, with respect to this, the, the, the document that we, that was circulated about reopening. I mean, I, 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 I think it helps, large parts of it have to be revised, as we said, as Ted said in the. I don't know the degree to which council wants to, you know, give this to staff. Say we'll do what the governor has allowed.
Right.
And, and what works, you know, physically for. I, I just don't know how you want to work that. I did have one specific question. In phase two, it says regular, uh, council meetings at City Hall, spacing the chairs. I thought, I thought we decided we physically couldn't do that.
I, I, you know, I was thinking about that this morning. And, and when you look at where you have to space the chairs, that may not be realistic.
Okay.
So, so we have, we have kind of two options. Each has its benefits and disadvantages. If we were to move meetings to say the Rowland Center where you have more physical space. You could space people, but we can't stream from there. If, so when, if we wait until we can go back into council chambers. You, you have more people who can participate remotely because we will be able to, to stream it. And I think, um, you know, again, given the demographics of, of Lewis. There may be people who want to be civically engaged, but aren't comfortable going to meetings where there's not a whole lot of room. So, um, it, it may be better to, to continue virtual until we can do City Hall and stream it. But, you know, I think that's up to you guys. The, the other thing we could do is we could have it where the body meets in City Hall and streams it. And just develop a, a mechanism for the public to be able to participate.
I like that option.
If, if we can, if we can get the, I, I thought we couldn't get the chairs six feet, the five chairs six feet apart.
Oh, you can't get the five chairs six feet apart.
How do you, how do you do that then?
So you could do, okay, so you could probably get the five of you up there. And Glenn and Ellen Lorraine and the chief and me elsewhere in the room. And that, you wouldn't be able to have any public in, the public would all be virtual.
I don't know, I'd like to hear. Hear from the public.
Yeah, you know, we did talk about setting some sort of a reopening workshop and we, we have not done that yet. So, so maybe we can do that. It does look like Trina has her hand up. I, I'm going to unmute Trina. Trina Brown Hicks, you're on the air.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I know I'm for one, um, am not that comfortable with being in a room. With, um, a lot of, uh, people gathering. So as a member of a commission, um, how would that? My question would be, how would the city ha- handle that? When you have maybe members of the board or a commission who is not comfortable with, with being in a room, even with their own. Commissioners or board members.
Again.
Proximity.
And, and again, keeping in mind that demographically, our, our boards and commissions are a little bit older than.
Right.
You know, the, the state's median age.
Exactly, I know. That's, that, that's the other thing.
So, so could we let each commission decide, commission board decide how that group wants to meet?
I think that would be the way to go, Bonnie. I think each commission, ultimately, obviously the goal is to get back to City Hall. But on a case-by-case basis, and some of the commissions are quite small and others are.
You could, you couldn't have the planning commission because by the time you bring the commissioners in, you can't have any staff. Because you're ten and inside.
Right.
You got that right.
Rob, you're trying to ask a question, but you're muted. You're muted, Rob.
I think that it might be a good thing to let the commissions decide. So long as if any member of that commission is uncomfortable, they also have Zoom. Because it would be a way that certain people could no longer participate.
Right, right. Okay.
One, this is Mert, am I on still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, once again, we, the pavilion, you know, we have chairs and seating now that it's at all feasible for some of these actions. But as the place of last resort, if some people really feel they need to be in person, our pavilion is available to the city.
That's great. The only problem there is, is it would be.
There's no zooming and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So we, we do have two questions in the chat. One was, um, from Kay. And this was going back to the concert. Is there, um, an opportunity for ambassadors to work as ushers? So, you know, hopefully, we can. I, I would like to try it and, and see people just abiding and, you know.
Right.
Have minimal staffing. And then Tom Panetta asked, what would it take to get streaming at the Rowland Center? So there, there's a number of issues there. One is that the, the network is. LHS's network, it's not the city's. The. And, and we only have Wi-Fi access there. The encoder for the streaming requires, you know, a, a physical ethernet connection. Um, so there's that piece that, that is a technology issue that also involves cost. The other piece is, you know, the, the cost of the, you know, the video system and the control system. When I think that was like five thousand dollars, so it's not an insignificant cost. Am I right about that cost, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah, that's a good estimate.
Um, I, it's, it's not an insignificant cost. And it's not, um, I'm not sure how we get beyond the network issue either.
Well, I think in the background of all of this is, you know, just because we're reopening and the restrictions are loosening. Does not mean this pandemic is over.
Right, right.
Agreed.
I mean, I would kind of say that if any member of, I mean, Zoom has its pluses and its minuses. But I, I would, I would frankly say respecting the people who volunteer to be on our commissions and boards. If any member does not want to meet in, in person, I think it should be by Zoom. Because it, it's going to be very, very difficult to have, you know, three people in council chambers and two people on Zoom. I, I just think we really have to bend over backwards to, to make sure that people feel comfortable when they're, they're trying to help do the city's business.
That's a good point. I agree with that.
I agree with that also.
Okay, so I think we can move on that one. So let the commissions decide on their own. You know, we can do similar with the city council meetings. So there's another question, go ahead. I think there's another question that we need to think about, and that is, uh, the, in, the activating of the downtown.
Before we go on to that.
What do you want to bring up?
We, we do have both Tom Panetta and Kay commenting in the chat box. That since the planning commission routinely uses the Rowland Center due to hearing size, maybe it's something worth considering for the long term.
Sure.
And Kay said, the situation is, I believe, a permanent one and may make the electronic updates worth the expense. So, I mean, a- again, I, I don't think we're saying it's off the table. It's just not something. I mean, we just went through great expense to get that technology into City Hall. I think, you know, it's a timing issue of when we would be able to and what, and how we would deal with that network issue. To be able to hand it to the Rowland Center.
Right, and also, you know, other things relating to security of it and everything else.
Right, so, okay, back to you, sorry.
Okay, so we've been talking about the downtown parking meters. As you know, we activated the beach meters on Saturday. Uh, and we're all hooked up with Park Mobile and that's working okay. Uh, so the question is, knowing that we still are having, some people do, um, takeout from the restaurants. And pickup from stores, uh, do we, you know, we had originally proposed that we would, we would, uh, activate the meeting on June 1st. As was originally thought, but with all the changes that are going on, uh, how would we like to proceed? Do we, and knowing that our shops are trying to attract business, this was a discussion this morning, um, uh, with the Chamber. And, and others, uh, and the market, in the Downtown Merchants Association Group. And the idea might be that we activate all of the meters in the, in the, in the lots. That would be eighteen twelve, the Third Street Lot, Canalfront Park. And that we consider leaving the meters off, uh, in this, the individual meters off downtown. So that people could come and make a quick stop to pick up something and either food or merchandise and move on. Uh, then you run into the issue of, uh, do you do all of that downtown or do you do part of it? And if you do part of it, what part do you do? Uh, so there's, uh, there are lots of discussion about that. And the revenue sources, uh, Ellen Lorraine, you can provide us breakdown on what we get from the individual meters versus the station meters. On an annual basis, uh, and we might do this for a while until we get a little further into the opening. But one of the other concerns, it was expressed by the merchants themselves, uh, would be the number of people that would come and park in a downtown Second Street meter. Or Market Street meter or wherever and just be there all day, the employees. And so that would do, and then brings up another enforcement issue to think about.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
So, so from, from my perspective, I think, um, we need to do what we can to support the businesses. I, I think that if we took the, um, metered parking on Front Street. And at, um, and on Second Street and Market. Market closest to, well, I guess even at Mary Vessels Park and made it at least a portion of it. Curbside pickup or fifteen minute and enforced it. So that, you know, if somebody decides they're going to park there all day, it's clear that's not allowed. That that would be able to support the businesses, but also, um, make sure that we're not having people park all day. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be all of that parking. It, for instance, in front of Mary Vessels Park, it could be three, three spots or something, just so that there's something. But I, I think that that would help if businesses, one of the things I'm hearing about restaurants is that. is that restaurants at thirty percent capacity, a lot of them will not fully open. So we may still see restaurants with curbside. And I I think, you know, while we do need to worry about our own revenue picture, I also think we need to do what we can to to prop them up as well. So I I would like to have some flexibility to maybe start with the majority of Second Street as as fifteen minute or curbside and then, you know, phase it back if it seems like we don't need that much.
Can I ask one quick question? Is the the curbside pickup, is that mainly at dinnertime or is that also a lunchtime thing?
Well, at this point, it's also the shops. So i- if I see something on a shop's Facebook page, I can call and say, I want that. And then I can pay for it online or pay for it on the phone and then come and pick it up. So it, the curbside, and and the merchants don't yet know what way of shopping is going to be most comfortable for their clientele. So so they don't know for sure, but I think we we all kind of intuitively know that paying to park if people are just picking up something and that just having no rules so that people park all day and it doesn't meet your purpose are not the best ways to do it.
I really like the idea, Anne Marie, of of the group, for the areas where there's curbside pickup, of limiting it to fifteen minutes and keeping the the outer parking lots available for people who want to browse in a, let's say, in a retail store, you know, just pick something up from the curb. And the fifteen minute limit sounds about right to me. But I wonder if, since this is something that's now addressed in an ordinance, whether we need to have an ordinance that says something like in the city's manager, city manager's discretion, these can be changed during the pandemic on, you know, on one day's notice or whatever it is. But we do have it, I think, parking
Is covered in ordinance.
Are covered by ordinance.
Can, could, could we make one side of Second Street fifteen minutes and the other regular? I'm just trying to think if if that would, I mean, I completely agree, we need to support the the businesses that that's, I I completely, I'm with that. I'm just trying to think of how to balance. And of course, none of us know what the demand's going to be. So could we, could we start maybe that way? Because that, at least that's clear, you know, one side is one, one side is the other. I just don't know.
We can try, we could do it where if you're driving on Second Street, the right hand side could be paid parking and the the curbside would be the angle parking. And, you know, again, I don't think that it's all going to be needed for that. So I think we would probably, you know, be able to at least, we just need to make sure that whatever we do, that we have signs, so it's clear to the people who are there and that we've put it out publicly so that people aren't frustrated.
And make sure that the chamber ambassadors know how to counsel people. And the merchants, for that matter. You know, because they could say, come to pick up, park on the left, you know, something like that. The concern I have about limiting it to over at Mary Vessels Park is you don't want to disadvantage any particular vendor.
But you only have one shop there now. You have all of the notes. You've got stepping, I'm thinking, I was thinking, I wasn't thinking retail. Yeah, that's true. I wasn't thinking retail, I was thinking.
Yeah, so what I was thinking is if you said all of the parking spaces, and I I can't count them off the top of my head, but all the parking spaces on the left hand, the north side, I guess that is, the street, that's about as clear as we can get, or we could just say all of them. I don't know. I, it's very hard to know what the demand's going to be.
Again, as long as we're clear in our communication, we can monitor it and make changes.
Do that, we can adapt this as as we see what the volume is. I like the idea of sort of splitting it, so you have some some metered parking as well as some pickup. I think it's a good one.
I just wonder, when we talk about fifteen minutes, that's awful short. It seemed to me that thirty minutes would be a more reasonable time. It would also give time for our meter people, if you gave them a little stick with some chalk on it as they walk by, every fifteen minutes, they could go by the free parking and mark, have marked the tires and people are still there after the thirty minutes or whatever, then you could give them a ticket. So I I I don't want to get over enthusiastic about fifteen minutes. I I think we need to be reasonable in in doing that. So that would be my concern is that the amount of time that we set needs to be a little more thoughtful to the to the people. Limited time free parking and some meter parking.
We are meeting with the the group that the chamber has convened to work on reopening on Thursday. So and and I guess Glenn, if you can address Mr. Morgan's issue about the ordinance. But if we could have the flexibility to work with them and develop a a plan, knowing that it's not a permanent plan, I I think that could be helpful.
I would be good with that.
I was just looking at the emergency preparedness section of the code. It doesn't specifically provide for suspending ordinances without an ordinance doing so. But the, but there, you know, there is an emergency operations plan that's adopted under that chapter that may allow for short term term modifications of ordinances without a specific new ordinance. So I'll look at that and have that addressed before before you meet, Anne Marie.
Resolution, maybe a a resolution right at this meeting that we we delegate to the city manager the flexibility during the pandemic to relax or impose.
How about modify?
And don't forget, you guys have a meeting on Friday at one.
Can I ask another question about about parking? Are we planning on reopening Beach One and Beach Two parking completely now? I mean, I think it was limited last weekend.
I I would like to keep it how we have it now through next weekend to see. I mean, the the weather, the weather was our friend this weekend, so.
But it looks pretty bad next weekend, too.
Yeah, except Sunday, but let's face it, they don't know.
There was never a shortage of parking over the beach on Saturday, even when it was a beautiful day.
So so I I would like to to keep that at least maybe a couple more weekends so that we can monitor and and see what it's like when it gets full.
I think that's great. I just wanted to, since we're on the topic, I just wanted to kind of bring it up.
I think, you know, it's obviously, it's a very flexible, very quick changing, changing topic here. And there'll be more to come as as the Downtown Merchants Association, they they're really working hard to come up with plans to to improve the marketing and reattract not only locals but out of state visitors who might will be coming soon. I don't think there's anything else at this point, Anne Marie, that we need to talk about in reference to phase one, two. Yes, Brad?
Ted, I had a, I had a phone call about the farmer's market. And I was told that Shields School would not allow them to open there on Saturday. And the concern expressed to me was that other school systems in the state are allowing the farmer's markets to use the school parking lots. Why is Lewis being excluded? And the question is, what can the council do to help farmer's market? Because without Shields School, where are they going to go? And so I think that's an issue that.
There are several things about that. And hold on, my phone's been ringing while we've been on this meeting. And one of the, one of the calls that came in was called from Bob Fulton, the superintendent of the school, okay? And then I just got an email literally that came in four minutes ago that read, they just heard from the assistant superintendent and the shields will be allowed to be used for the farmer's market this weekend. So I think it's a moot point, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
So that was, that, yeah, that was resolved. And I had it earlier, before we, you may recall, when we were on the call, waiting for the call to start with the governor, Jordan mentioned that they were working with Secretary Skews to resolve that issue. So I think it, there was a lot of attention put to that, so it's it's done. Good news. All right, is there anything else that we that we need to bring forward at this point in the public meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
So the motion is second, all in favor? Okay, well, first of all, we thank everyone who was on the call, who participated and who listened. And we'll be back on Friday at one o'clock with another city council meeting, which will have more information for the Downtown Merchants Group to share at that time. So we can go into executive session. Thank you all for participating and we'll see you Friday.